Yeah, you don't have any grandkids yet, right? You're not old enough. Let me tell you, all of these are like so cool. We have grandkids too. It's incredible. I am almost eight.
We're good to go? All right, welcome. Welcome to this meeting of the Casable City Planning Commission. I am Mike Packer. We have a full agenda tonight. Just to go over it real quickly, we have swearing in of a new planning commissioner. We will have a couple of administrative items, some conditional use permits, and we have some public hearings on a few different items. So we will begin with the welcome and swearing in of Planning Commissioner alternate Paul Toller.
All right, come on up. Do you have family there with you, right?
I do.
Right there? Okay, Ben. All right, well, just in case you want to get there. I'll just have you pick your hand up and you say, "I'm Paul Toller."
I'm Paul Toller.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of Casable City Planning Commission member.
To the office of Casable City Planning Commission. It's supposed to be like.
Do solemnly swear. And maybe I will too. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm that I will support.
That I will support.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And the Constitution of the state of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
With the oath.
With the oath.
Hey, welcome.
Thank you.
We will have you.
Fantastic. Welcome. First item before we get into any discussion, declaration of conflict of interest. Does anyone on the commission have a conflict? Seeing none, we will move forward on the agenda to item number three. A conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for Whitney Gunworks located at 244 East, 1500 South for John Whitney.
John Whitney, are you here? All right, hello. So this is a conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for Whitney Gunworks located at 244 East, 1500 South for John Whitney. He is applying for a major home occupation so that he can do a business, Whitney Gunworks, where he will be building custom firearms for customers. He will eventually be selling them online and right now it has just been through word of mouth. As you can see from our slides right here, he lives right here on this corner. We've had a sign placed out on his property since Friday, and I've had two phone calls. And actually, one person stopped me because I happen to be your neighbor. So I was outside and had someone ask me as well what was going on. I'm just happy to tell them that it's a major B home occupation, that there will not be customers coming to the home unless they're picking up their product. He's currently working with the ATF to get his FFL license. Every time one of these come up, I always panic because I think that I know what I'm doing and then they start throwing acronyms like ATF and FFL and it's a lot. However, what he's doing is not building guns, he's customizing them. There will not be any gunsmithing. So once he has those licenses with the state, I will pass those on to our police department. They have also been contacted. I've let them know about this and they are working with me. And as of right now, they've given approval and see no reason to not give him his license. We're waiting to hear back from the ATF for the home inspection and then he'll be able to get those licenses and be able to begin business. So staff is recommending approval for a conditional use permit for a location at 244 East, 1500 South for John Whitney with any conditions Planning Commission feel are necessary, allowed by our code, any 1712-4, 1726-4. And the applicant is here, so if you have any questions, feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Thank you. There is the opportunity for the applicant to add anything. Do you, Mr. Whitney, do you have anything you want to add to this or?
Just that if.
Sir, will you come up to the microphone?
Just that at any point in time, should the business grow to something that is large and what I have anticipated, I will be moving to a off-site retail location so that I can accommodate the customer base to keep the foot traveling down within our budget.
Okay, thank you. While we have you up here, does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Okay. We'll let you take your seat again. Thank you.
Actually, I do.
Okay, we got a question.
Sorry. Question about security. Is it the ATF that they require certain procedures?
This is correct. The ATF does require that the area where firearms are kept is locked at all times. I do have a room that I will be using as my workshop/storage area. It does have a combination deadbolt that only I have access to, as well as I have safes on site that I can store firearms.
Yeah, the reason I ask is usually the neighbors are concerned about, you know, if somebody breaks in, you know, or they know you're there because it's public record. But I think the ATF also has its own regulations, but I don't get the impression you're storing any ammo at all, correct?
No, I will be selling any ammo. It'll just be.
Okay.
My success for the notes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
What were the comments? You said you talked to a couple people.
Basically, one of them wanted to know if they were selling their property to put apartments there. Just kidding. No, they just wanted to know what the sign was out front. So the one neighbor was asking to see what was going in. Yeah, that's basically it, just to see what, yeah, just wanting to know what the sign was about. And they, once I told them that it was a home occupation, I think people do bristle a little bit when they hear that it's for, you know, they think large production for gun manufacturing and just shared with them that it's just the customization of the guns and that he will be working with the ATF and that it's not just, that it will be a safe, safe business there.
Any other thoughts or concerns? Seems like everything's in order, you know? We celebrate the idea of people having businesses and doing work, so. Does anyone feel like making a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move that we approve the conditional use permit for a major B home occupation for the applicant, John Whitney, at the address shown on the agenda for, I'm trying to get this.
Major B.
Oh, yeah, I said major B home occupation. I don't need to explain exactly what they're going to be doing. And it appears that staff has properly noticed this. This is not a public hearing, correct?
No.
Okay, based on the staff recommendation and the discussion with the applicant, and that I recommend that we approve with the following two items. Number one, or actually, one's a comment, one would be a suggested condition. The comment is that I think we are blessed that we have an applicant that has actually come and is applying to comply with law. This business is often done at homes and there's, the city has no idea. Many cities don't know that these people are doing this left and right. So I applaud the city and/or the applicant for the applicant coming tonight and applying to do this correctly and so that we know and can license the business. The only condition of approval that I would recommend is that if the city receives some kind of a complaint or a problem about the use, that we will require the applicant to come back to the Planning Commission for a potential review of the use. That's my motion. Oh, before I finish that, let me just say, recommend approval based on the findings that are in the staff report. I think those are in, those are in order, especially D.
Do we have a second or a discussion on the motion? I don't know if we can discuss the motion if it's not been seconded.
I'll second, and then just a question for Paul or just a comment. Paul, so when you talk about if there's anything that's out of compliance to bring it back here to the Planning Commission, I'm thinking about other conditional uses for home occupations and usually those are handled by the staff, I think. And they review those if there are any issues that arise. We normally, I don't recall really seeing any after that.
You know, that's a good point. I think what happened is that long ago, we had a problem within a community where I worked where we had some home occupations that were, that were pretty, that were, they were pretty controversial. And so we said, hey, if we have complaints from neighbors and stuff, they're legitimate, we can bring you back here to potentially revoke the conditional use permit. But I do think you're right, Will. I think that stuff's now handled internally, it doesn't need to come back here. So I will accept your amendment to the motion.
I'd make that amendment.
So accepted.
All right, so other discussion, other comments?
So the motion now is just to approve it, right? Without condition?
Well, with.
And with the findings.
Noted on the staff report.
Yep.
Good, good clarification on that. Seeing no discussion, we will vote. We'll start with Commissioner Alred.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Next item of business, agenda item number four. Conditional use permit for a twin home for Kurosh-Haroni located at 946 East, 200 North.
Thank you, Chair Packer.
Thank you.
So this is a conditional use permit to place a twin home on this lot that is zoned R18. Twin homes are permitted conditional use in the R18 zone. A couple of things to add in consideration of this application. One of them is during staff review, we were looking at when this particular parcel was originally subdivided in 2020. City council at the time added a requirement for a pull-through driveway. While our conditional use standards don't usually allow for that kind of requirement, the applicant is aware of it. And given that this conditional use permit application is before the Planning Commission, just wanted to reiterate that this is a condition of subdivision approval. The second thing is I had received some calls in regard to this application and wanted to provide some clarification. I had a couple of calls asking about, there's a provision in our code that stipulates that duplexes have to be at least 500 feet apart from each other. And I wanted to iterate the fact that that applies specifically to duplexes and this application is a twin home. So that particular code section would not be pertinent to this application we have here. Moving on, this, the signage for, the notification was placed on the lot on January 3rd. We did receive at least four or five calls and we had someone actually come in this morning to ask questions about the application and get some clarity. Most of the calls we received were expressing concern and kind of asking about what conditions could be imposed on the project given the circumstances. But staff, with all that in consideration, is recommending approval based on the standards that we have in place for twin homes and the conditions that Planning Commission feels are appropriate.
Can you clarify what the difference would be between a duplex and a twin home? Is there like a standard definition or?
Ownership really is about it.
Yeah, let me pull up the definition. Essentially, a twin home has a zero lot line and a duplex is just one lot. But let me pull that up. So this two-family dwelling or duplex is a building designed for use or exclusively as a residence by two families living independently of each other. This one, the, excuse me, the twin home is a building designed for use as a residence by two families and for which each dwelling unit and its lot may be owned separately from the other dwelling unit and lot. So with a twin home, there would be a requirement for a subdivision to essentially create that zero lot line. Whereas a duplex does not have to have any type of a subdivision.
And so our ordinance would allow for that in any zone? So you have an 8,000 square foot lot in an R18 zone, but then you split it for the twin home and that's allowed under our conditional use provision?
Yes, yes. And the, we go back to the R1 zone. So it does have provisions on our conditional uses, right? We go to this two-family dwellings, twin homes, and then it has, it has a process that would need to go through for converting an existing home. But there is a minimum lot size for the twin home and that is 4,000 square feet.
Right, okay.
Yep, that's what I wanted to get to right there.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
And the applicant, sorry, the applicant is here if the Planning Commission has any questions.
Yeah, if the applicant is here, if you have anything to add or want to come up and allow the commission to ask any questions that they might have. Do we have the applicant here?
Yeah.
Thank you. Just go ahead and state your name and then. Yeah, thank you. Do you have anything you want to add before we ask any questions or?
If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I can.
Ms. Chair, I do have one.
Good.
Ms. Roni, so as Ann mentioned, when this was subdivided, when this lot was subdivided back in 2020.
Twenty.
Right. The city council put a provision in there that there should be a pull-through drive. And as we look at this as a conditional use, one of the provisions that we are allowed to consider in granting or putting conditions on a conditional use is to provide for safe circulation of vehicles and pedestrians. So do you have any, do you have an issue with providing a pull-through drive?
Not at all. We're doing a horseshoe.
Yeah.
So that was the plans the whole time.
Okay, all right.
Other questions?
I have a question for staff. So we're talking about a circular driveway, correct?
Correct.
But what's the difference between, I'm not familiar with what's a pull-through driveway?
I think it's the same thing.
A pull-through is like a semi-circle?
Yeah.
Half-circle, horseshoe, yeah.
Yeah, half-circle.
We probably don't have a definition for that, but the intent would be so there is enough space on the property for someone to be able to pull out into traffic instead of back out into traffic.
So that would require a semi-circular driveway, okay.
And I didn't look at the difference between the two items. There was a subdivision right east, west of the Haroni property. And the special condition when that subdivision was applied or was approved was also that it would have to have like a hammerhead or a turnaround driveway. So I think, you know, you could do a hammerhead. The intent is just that we're not backing vehicles out onto 200 North, especially at this location. So as long as that site plan comes in and shows access being, and enough space being provided to have that safer, you know, exit of the property than we would approve that. So it could be circular, it could be hammerhead. It just needs to provide enough space so vehicles aren't backing out.
Okay, so I have a couple of follow-up concerns then. Do we have any restrictions in our code or requirements in our code about maximum amount of impervious surface in any given yard area? Okay, so that's not a problem if they were to have most of their front yard, both of these units paved, so you could have, okay. And then the other concern would be that, I don't know if staff addressed it, in one of the conditions, I didn't see anything, maybe overlooked it, but we're going to have to have some kind of a, some kind of a provision where you can't have somebody blocking the ability to make that turn movement. You know what I mean?
So on the circular, the way you have it, you have a carport.
Yeah.
They pull their vehicle in on both sides.
Right.
Each unit has one. I mean, it's going to be very, the front edge is 150 feet.
Okay, so you've got plenty of room to back?
Yeah, we have 150 feet frontage from property to property and, you know.
Okay, so if they pull in, then when they back out?
When they pull in, they can back out. This home can back out this way and pull out that way. The other home, same way, they can back out.
So there will be an easement?
They can be going like this and pulling out.
Okay, yeah. See what I'm saying? If somebody's not, you mean you make sure there's no blockage for that driveway?
Yeah, there would be.
Right, so that somebody can't really, you know.
Right.
Okay, that's my concern is just that circulation in the front yard. If you're going to share that circular driveway.
And you're able to do that backing up on both sides.
Right, so it's going to be one semi-circular driveway?
Yeah, it's just circular like that, that they, when they pull in from this side, they can pull in into their carport area.
Yeah.
Same with the opposite side.
Okay.
They can do that.
It's just going to require cooperation between the two units to make sure.
Well, it's fairly big. I mean, it's going to be a big circular driveway.
You'd be surprised. I've had to deal with this. I don't, this is why I'm asking, is I've had to deal with this before. And, you know, anyway, but thank you for the explanation. I'm clear now, thank you.
Okay, no problem.
I have a question. Would the carport be able to handle more than one car for each unit?
Well, it's for a big car. It's their, I don't know the exact footage on there with that. These are the drawings if you want to, you want to see that?
Okay, good. So the intent is for one large car, but not multiple cars per unit?
They could do too small possibly, but this is on each side.
Okay.
See, that raises a question.
The next slide does show elevation drawings that might also be helpful.
That could be helpful. Just wondering though, if they have more than one driver, more than one car?
Yeah.
What is that going to do to the access?
Yeah.
Well, they can also park on the driveway.
Right.
Car tractors, driveway tetris.
Yeah, that's the question. Would there be room enough?
Because there's no, there's no on-street parking at all. So if they have an overflow, that's the question.
Right. On-street parking's not allowed on 200 North, right?
No, it's allowed, except for our winter overnight.
That area though doesn't, it's like the road narrows right there.
It's all going to get reconstructed though here in the next year or two. Yeah.
Yes, it will. And we've consulted with our engineer and our public works department and this plan shouldn't be impacted at all by that project.
Right.
We don't have any restrictions in the city for on-street parking except for our winter snow ordinance. So, and I don't think there's, I mean, how do I say this? I think there may be an interest from some people to have parking enforcement, but we just don't have the staff and the ability to dedicate that. We've had requests over in the business park, the problem with trying to create a no parking areas and you have to enforce it. And we just, right, the police department would be left with that. They just are not staffed adequately to have full-time parking enforcement. We don't, I mean, we really don't even have full-time traffic enforcement, which could be utilized for that, but there's just not an ability with our resources as they sit to do any type of parking enforcement other than with the winter and the snowstorms.
With the reconstruction of 200 North, parking will be permitted on 200 North?
I would assume it will.
Yeah.
It is now.
I mean, it is now, certainly.
Yeah, I would assume that afterwards it still will be. Whether it's a smart idea is another story.
Right.
But I don't foresee us trying to put in red curb there and trying to enforce it.
Yeah.
Each dwelling would be required to provide two parking spots. So if the carport can fit one vehicle, then there would need to be on, you know, somewhere else in the driveway area that could accommodate a second vehicle.
Right.
So there would have, and there would have to be then a total of four spots for a vehicle to park. And then I think part of what Commissioner Alred was leaning towards is, well, if somebody parks and then blocks the ability for somebody to, you know, back out and then pull out onto 200, we're kind of defeating the purpose of that particular condition. But I would think that anyone who would live there would not want to back out. So figuring out how that would work would be.
That's the reason for my question on the percentage of impervious surface. Because of the semi-circular nature and the fact that it's not a two-car wide, it's going to, it's going to mean somebody's parking either straight out into it or going to be, depending on the width of that, semi-circular driveway.
I'm going to make it wider than.
Right, that's why I asked that question because I can see there's going to be blockage problems unless that's really wide. You're going to have to pave most of that front yard to make it work.
Well, at least up to the front of the garage part too.
Yeah.
I'm going to have that wider.
Yeah.
So that if you do back up this way, you're able to pull out the other way. Same, same, it's going to be more than 12 feet wide.
Yeah, it's going to have to be to avoid the problem that I raised.
Right.
So, and I know, I know you'll do that because you don't want your.
Plan.
Right. People living there are not going to want to be there if it's too narrow.
Yeah, the, I think there's space to do what needs to be accomplished. As the applicant mentioned, right, there's 150, almost 152 feet of frontage. So, and then with that 25-foot setback, there should be adequate space to accommodate the, I guess, total of four vehicles that would need to be provided the parking.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm probably planning on doing even more than that. I'm going to make it so it's comfortable for people to park there.
Yeah.
I don't want, you know, visitors to come and have issues. So my plan is to make it bigger than, you know, the two cars for each side, so.
Okay.
And we have the room to do it, so.
To see the dimensions of the carport, which would be, we still can't see that.
Yeah, about 15 by 22.
Yeah, 15, 3.
Okay.
Yeah, so 15, 3 wide for each and then 22 feet, 30, about 32 feet deep? I don't know how that works because I don't think the building envelope is more than 22 feet wide.
I think it's 24 feet.
24 feet, okay.
24 feet.
Okay. But that's, you know. But that's, you know, that's what, we review the site plan with the building permit application, so when that comes in, we would review all of this and ensure it meets codes and the, the standards or the conditions that were approved with this subdivision.
Just a quick question for staff. Does, do you have to subdivide for the twin home with the zero lot line? Do you have to subdivide within?
Yes, based on our definition, yes, you would have to. And that would need to be completed within a year of the conditional use being approved. So those conditional uses expire if they are not acted upon after one year.
That's what makes it a twin home versus a duplex.
Because it's two parcels.
I didn't, I didn't hear her question. What, what has to be done with it?
The question was if it's a twin home, does it have to be subdivided? And the answer to that is yes. According to our definition, the subdivision would have to occur.
Okay. And, but it's not, they're not asking for a twin home, right?
Sorry, what was that?
But they're asking for a duplex, correct?
No, they're asking for a twin home.
Oh, they're asking for a twin?
Yeah, it's a twin home.
Okay, and our discussion, sorry, I got mixed up. Yeah, so they will have to subdivide it.
Correct.
But, yeah, okay. They just have to subdivide it before the year is up.
Yeah, they would, they would have one year to complete the subdivision.
Is that, is that one year from the start of the bill or one year after the completion of the bill?
It's one year from the date of the approval. So if it gets approved tonight, you would have until January 9th of '26 to get that subdivision approved. And that is all done, uh, at the staff level. We would put a sign out on the property noticing of the subdivision, but it would not come to any public body. Um, I do want to just add a little bit more information. And the applicant can probably confirm this, but when the subdivision was approved and recorded, you did not install any laterals or do any utility work out in front of the property before it was recorded?
No, I did not.
Okay. That should have happened. So we will make sure that with the twin home subdivision, that utility work will have to be completed before we record that plat. And with the project that is forthcoming with improving 200 north, you will want to get that work done because once that project is completed and paved, there's a four-year moratorium on cutting the asphalt and the pavement. So you would not be able to, um, to install those utility, the, the laterals and cut the road until that moratorium would expire.
Yeah, I was waiting for tonight to get that, so I'd start on that.
And, and then with the subdivision process, right, you'll have to have several drawings that are submitted, you know, created by an engineer and that'll show where those utilities will be located. And those will have to be approved through our public works and engineering department.
All right, other questions while we have the applicant up here? All right, we'll let you sit back down. Thanks for coming up. Uh, other discussion questions by the commission? I will say, just for the sake of the public that's here, um, to clarify, the, uh, a conditional use permit is what we consider a, um, what's the word? The administrative procedure, which means that instead of weighing in all kinds of different issues and deciding whether or not it's the best fit or anything like that, it is something that is allowed by law if the conditions are met. And our job here today is to determine if the conditions have been met. Uh, and if they have been and everything seems in order, then it is our obligation to grant that, uh, conditional use. It's kind of built in that way. Uh, it's a little different than say like a rezone or something like that where you take into account a lot of different issues. So we, you know, we do have the public comment that came in with emails and things like that. We certainly listened to that, but at, at the same time, an administrative procedure is something that, you know, we're really just kind of making sure that it, it fits the, uh, the requirements. Some of our later agenda items are, um, things that we pass on to the city council. They're the ones that handle, you know, changes to code and, and things like that. And so you'll see a little different procedure there and that's why we'll have the public comment on those. I just, hopefully that, you know, maybe clarifies kind of the process that we're looking at here and some, some of the questions that we're asking.
Mr. Chair, maybe just to echo or, or a little further on what you're talking about. Understate code conditional uses are, and under court cases that have been decided, they're pretty much almost like permitted uses. Planning commission or an administrative body is really only allowed to not approve them if there is some kind of an impact that cannot be mitigated. And mitigated doesn't mean eliminated. It just means the impact softened. In this particular case, you have a property that had, that meets the minimum square footage of the zoning. Any property in that zone would be allowed to apply for a conditional use permit for a twin home. And if it meets the requirements, then it pretty much, um, has to be approved. And, um, as the staff has noted here, this particular proposal pretty much meets all of the requirements that we have in our code.
Well said. So do we have any other conditions we feel like need to be discussed? Or questions that are still pending? I think the, the staff report has been very thorough. I appreciate all the work that's gone into that. Everything I've seen seems to fit the, uh, the city codes and, and the conditions for this. I'm not aware of any issues that, you know, this property has that, you know, would be unique and need to really have a, any kind of, you know, mitigating issue, you know, type of thing.
Ready for a motion?
I am always ready for a motion.
Okay. I would make a motion that, uh, we approve the application for a conditional use permit at 946 East 200 North. Excuse me, for the, uh, twin home. With the provisions that are noted in the staff report, um, that must be completed. And also particularly noting the requirement to, uh, provide a pull-through drive to make sure that there is adequate access for the street without having vehicles needing to back out onto that street.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Uh, just any discussion on the motion? Seeing done, we'll start the voting. Sure.
Aye.
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 Motion passes. All right, thank you. We'll move on now to agenda item number five. A conditional use permit for farm animals at 558 East Center Street. Who wants to give us the background on this one?
Thank you, Chair Packer. Um, this, uh, conditional use application, uh, is for, the property is zoned, uh, for our diverse residential zone, um, where farm animals are allowed as a conditional use. The property has a total square footage of 30,709 square feet. So they definitely meet the required 4,000 square foot minimum. The, uh, the requested farm animals for this particular application are horses. And the code requirements for horses are that you have roughly 10,890 square feet per horse or 21,780. The applicant's property does have that amount of square footage, so they do meet that requirement. As far as yard and structure regulations, um, these will be met without issue. The sign was placed on the property on January 3rd. We received, I believe, two phone calls, mainly just asking the nature of the conditional use. And one email was received expressing support of the application. But beyond that, um, no additional conditions beyond what are required in the farm animal chapter or suggested by staff. And staff is recommending approval of this application with any conditions the commission feel are appropriate. The applicant is also here to answer questions.
Thank you. Uh, does the applicant have anything to add? Uh, do you wanna add anything or make any comments on? Okay, we may call you up if we have some questions. Uh, does the commission have any questions you wanna ask to either staff or the applicant?
Just for clarification, when you say that the lot size, does that include the home or is that the, the green space of the land?
It's the lot size.
Okay.
I guess I do, just a question for the applicant. Your intent is primarily just to have the two mini horses? Any other, any other animals or?
Uh, we have a couple of dogs, a cat and a couple of chickens, that type of thing. But it's the miniature horses and it'll come to the next agenda item. Uh, we, we are hoping to get four miniature horses that we brought from Florida. There are currently two, um, that we have on the property.
Okay.
Have you, do you have a structure for them built already?
We have a, we bought a temporary, like a corral. We have corral panels with a little dome over it that we've constructed to give them some protection from the snow, basically.
Okay.
Question, question for staff. Do we have any distancing regulations for, um, farm animal buildings from the property line or from an abutting home?
Yeah, we do. We ran into that in a meeting, a couple, a couple meetings ago.
A lot of communities will actually say, you know, any, any structure to house the animals on a property must be at least X number of feet from.
I think it was 50 if I remember.
Yeah. Last, yeah, community I worked had to be 50 feet from any abutting home dwelling. Not from the property line, but from the home, which meant it could be reasonably close. But do you have, do you have any plans that way? I mean.
Yeah, so it, the location we have is a bunch of backyards that are together. So almost no matter where we put it, it would be at least 50 feet away.
Okay.
But we're, we're mostly just planning on leaving these kind of more temporary shelters. Maybe sometime down the road, we could build something more permanent, but that's not in the plans.
Well, if there's nothing in the code that way, then I guess, you know, we can't really put a condition on it. But that, you know, maybe we should make a suggestion or we could, a condition, distance, but the code's silent on it.
It, yeah, it's, if you look on the second page.
It's not silent on it, Commissioner. There's a 50-foot.
Oh, that was my question.
Step back from a dwelling and that's, um.
From where?
Well, let me, I mean, it was included in the, in the staff report.
It's on page seven.
The code, so.
That's what I.
From all buildings?
Yeah, um, any.
Oh, that's the problem.
So any structure for the animals would have to be at least 50 feet from dwellings.
It says, okay, predominantly used or occupied by humans, okay. It says all buildings, but then it does modify it predominantly used by humans. Cause I'm thinking, what about a shed? Does that mean a shed? Does that have to be 50 feet from a shed?
No, it, it needs to be 50 feet from, I mean, I, it could probably be worded better, but I think it's clear the intent is that.
Okay.
It be.
Should just say dwelling.
Or it's a residence, yeah.
Well, we can address that in the next agenda item.
There you go.
If, if the commission would like.
Thank you. That was the, that was the question I had was about distancing requirements.
And the lot to the west, do they still have horses on their property?
They do. They have one full-size horse.
The Selenites?
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, we'll let you sit down. I won't make you sit the entire time or stand the entire time, right? All right, discussion. Again, to me, this. This is not a, a public meeting and it'd be unusual to take comments from the public, um, in the meeting for this item. We would have to make a motion and decide as a commission to allow that to happen. Is there any interest among the commissioners to allow a comment on this issue? I'm slightly hesitant to, you know, make a precedent of, of that since again, this is a, a conditional use. Did you address those concerns through staff or through email? Okay. Um, again, this, you know, being a conditional use, it's something that's essentially permitted as long as the conditions are met. And, um, while we want everyone to be able to, I guess, be heard, it's not, uh, something we would necessarily be able to change or go against if, um, so, uh, I'm a little.
Okay. I have a comment. Dealt with a lot of these over the years and I found that the biggest concern that people had with animals next door to their property, there were two. One was smell and the other one was flies. And, um, it doesn't look to me like this one will have a problem either way on that one for a couple of reasons. It's not a really big property. And so if it's not maintained well by the property owner, the property owner's gonna, gonna suffer from, you know, the smell and the flies too. If the property were more like an acre or two, then that's something they can push back as far as they want away from the house that technically comply with the ordinance. And it won't bother them much, but it'll really bother the neighbors. So it looks to me like under the findings portion of the staff report that there is a nuisance abatement section that requires them to show how they're going to comply with that.
Right.
Yeah, and, and, and having worked with a board of health in a couple of different counties, cities are ill-equipped. I promise you, cities are very ill-equipped to handle smell and flies. And it could draw, get dragged, I had one that dragged out for years down in Sandy City. And it was really miserable. Whole neighborhood is miserable because the guy who owned the horses wouldn't, he wouldn't get rid of the manure pile. So I think that's something to address and it, I think it'd be great if you could address it.
Yeah, happy to.
We're not having a public hearing, by the way, but, but, you know.
That's fine, cause we will on the next one, so.
It's a question you have, right, Paul?
It's a question I have, yes.
To the applicant, so, yeah, we. So I'll say that, um, the, the, when we first moved in, we moved in recently, within that first week is when we had a complaint and that was when we were the most behind on keeping up with mucking our little horses that we typically have because we have five kids and we're trying to unpack a house. We are very consistent at, uh, mucking the horses daily. Our children help with that. That's part of why we have them. We have two of the green, uh, waste bins that we put it into. We're not intending to pile it and do any kind of composting or anything like that. So we actually get rid of it each week, uh, with the garbage. So, we actually get rid of it each week with the garbage. And so, since, since that first week, we've kept up pretty well on, on keeping it clean. And that's our plan for the future on it, too.
A follow-up question. Let's say you're going to Hawaii for two weeks. Then what?
Yeah, so it, vacations are complicated. Once we pull the trigger on these type of animals, we have to hire somebody that is familiar with animals, that'll come feed them and, and take care of the waste.
You're not going to board them elsewhere while you're gone. You just have somebody come in and maintain it.
Yeah, it's, it's cheaper for us and easier on the animals for them to just come in and do it.
Okay. I don't know what Davis County Health Department regulations might be, but it might be something you want to look into, and just voluntarily arm yourself with that. Because our ordinance seems to say that you've got to comply, but I'm not reading a lot of detail in what that nuisance abatement is, so... Let me tell you, the, the whole concept of the word nuisance is really a nuisance. I saw a one-year battle over that word, and it went to court, and the court said you haven't defined nuisance well enough, and I couldn't get a city attorney to address it. So, I, I, that's what I'd recommend, maybe that we look at, or that you look at to reassure your neighbors.
Yeah.
Paul, it does say here that, it says the applicant shall show that odor, noise, dust, and drainage are controlled so as not to constitute a nuisance or a hazard to adjoining properties or uses. And that could be part of our approval, that the applicant just needs to provide probably a statement or something that, that explains how they're going to control the noise and the odor.
I really li, I really like that, Wolf, because that, I, I don't see a real problem here, based on the size of the animals or the number, and just got a good-sized property. But you can have people who just don't really, you know, they're, they're not careful about it. And so, I, I'd really like that suggestion, Wolf.
Thanks, thanks for that clarification. I, again, it's, it's a conditional use that is permitted, and I feel like, Wolf, your, your comment about some kind of statement or something about the nuisance abatement seems to be a good, I, I like that. Any concerns, any, are we ready for a motion, or?
I'll make a motion. I, I motioned that the planning commission approve a conditional use permit for Ben Wilson at the address at 558 East Center to have animals, farm animals, on the property as explained in the staff report. And rec, and this approval, recommend that we approve based on the findings in the staff report. Specifically, A and B, the findings are that it, it complies with A, which is the lot size, and then B, I think is less a finding than a condition, the way I read your staff report. Is that correct? That's more of a condition, B, instead of, it's not a finding?
It, it can be applied as a condition based on what the code says, it would be my interpretation.
Is staff open to the, to us having as a planning commission, the condition for approval would be the submission of a written, of a written plan by the applicant to comply with the requirement under B, nuisance abatement, which is Section 17-24-3, specifically related to maintenance of the property, dust, noise, drainage, and other things that would be corresponding to the animal use. As well as compliance with the distance, distance regulations for any, any structures on the property related to the distance from dwellings on abutting properties, which I believe is 50 feet away. And so, that is my motion, and I'm open to amendment or discussion on that.
Okay. Yeah, any discussion or amendment?
Have you gotten a second yet?
Well, yeah, we don't have a second. Do we have a second?
All second.
All right, we have a second. Discussion?
I think those are good, good provisions.
I agree. All right, seeing no discussion, we'll start the voting with myself. I vote aye.
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 All right, that conditional use passes. All right, item number six. This is a public hearing to consider changes to Title 17-24 Farm Animals and 17-2 definitions. For anyone who wants to comment on this particular thing, let me just tell you, we'll, we'll first entertain the report from the staff. Look at it, and then we will have the public comment section, and we'll explain that if anyone needs that. And then we will close the public comment, and, and the commission will discuss the proposal. So, let's have our, if I can find the right page. And this is something that would be, we're making a recommendation to the city council, so ultimately, this would go to the city council for, for action. Are you taking this one again?
Yes. Thank you, Chair Packer. So, this zoning text amendment was submitted by our previous applicant, Ben Wilson, specifically to address the category in the farm animal chapter that categorizes different kinds of animals, specifically the sheeps, sheep, goats, and llamas category, and the proposals to add mini horses specifically into that, as opposed to the horses, which are in one of the other categories. And then, in collaboration with staff, we're proposing some additional definitions, as well as modifications to the table that allot square footage requirements. Prior to discussion of that, I did want to provide a little bit more context for the benefit of the commission. This application was spurred initially by a code enforcement complaint that came in in regards to Ben Wilson's property. And as part of that discussion, we began the process of processing his conditional use to have two horses on the property. But within that discussion, we, we had a lot of research and interest from him into what it would take to add mini horses in as a category, to allow him to potentially have more than the two he currently has on site. And given that, you know, our farm animal chapter is something that we've had a lot of questions about and had the potential to be improved upon, the idea was, in addition to adding mini horses as a specific category, to clarify the categories we already have, and providing those additional definitions, so that in the future, hopefully, it'll be a little less murky for people who maybe don't have a conventional animal or an animal that maybe wasn't included before. Specifically, the definitions proposed are for a miniature horse, and then categories for all other animals, so small farm animals, which would include smaller-sized farm animals, such as fowl, rabbits, or others that are similar in size or impact; medium farm animals, which are medium-sized farm animals, including sheep, goats, llamas, mini horses, or other similar-sized; large farm animals, which includes horses, cattle, donkeys, mules, or other sized, similar-sized animals; and then swine, toad cover, hogs, or swine or pot-bellied pigs. And then, for the changes to the actual table, you'll see, as a matter of clarity, we removed kind of the lot specifications after the 4,000 square foot, with the understanding that once someone meets the 4,000 square foot requirement, there wouldn't be an additional lot area requirement beyond that 500 square footage. We clarified the language for each category, and then removed the line that specified 21,780 and 5,445 square feet as a point of confusion. And with that in mind, there were some minor changes to the yard and structure regulations, Section 17-24-3, to just align with what was proposed in those other two sections. So, these are, these proposals were done in conjunction with the applicant. He provided quite a lot of research and corroboration of what, how other cities have handled it, and so staff is presenting this as a potential text amendment with the changes presented. And based on the findings, staff is recommending approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, if I may just add a couple of things. This is one of the more unique applications. We don't get a lot of text amendments from citizens, but this is, in my mind, one of the beauties of our form of government, that a resident can say, hey, this impacts me, I'd like to see a change. So, I, I want to let the Wilson family know that we have appreciated their willingness to work with us through, you know, this difficult, what started out as a code enforcement complaint and trying to make accommodations. I think the discussion that we had with Mr. Wilson, who, on a side note, has an expertise in writing policy, not for land use, but given that there, it was very challenging to explain some of the nuances of this code that just is not well-written. So, I, I want to just give a little bit more context to this, the changes. It looks like we're making a lot of changes to the matrix, but really, we're not. All, these numbers, everything below 4,000, really is unnecessary, because the minimum lot size is 4,000, and everything else that comes after that, as we're just saying, with these particular category of animals, you're allowed this many animals per square footage. Same with this middle category. I believe there, and there probably was not a lot of legwork or research done when this was implemented, but our, our belief in how we've been interpreting this code is that the 20,000 square foot category is for our zones, and 21,780 applies to the RA zone. So, it, again, just doesn't make a whole lot of sense to try and say, 20,000, you have this amount of square footage available, but if you have an extra 1,780 square feet, that drops down. I, I think that was just kind of some weirdness with our code when some of our changes were made to the R zones, probably a long time back. But in speaking with people who have been working for the city, I mean, no longer work here, but our understanding is there really was not methodology or research behind these numbers. When we amended this portion up here, I believe it was in '22, and that also came from a resident, there was research that was provided that said, look, these smaller-sized animals need about 500 square feet per animal to kind of live hap, happily. So, just to kind of note that, this does look like we're making a lot of changes, but it really, like, there's no reason for these other four rows to be here. This is the pertinent information, we're not changing that. I don't see any purpose in saying if you have 20,000 square feet, just under a half acre, you can have, or you have to have a higher requirement, where if you have another 750, or 1,780 square feet, that requirement basically is cut by half. So, I think this would lend to a much easier understanding for our residents and interpretation for staff.
Yeah, thank you. That, that answered a question or two that I had. Mr. Wilson, as the applicant, do you have anything you want to add here to this?
No, I think they covered it well. I think our motivation for doing this was, in current code, a miniature horse, which is, you know, the size of a very large dog, was treated as the same as a Clydesdale or a full-size cow. So, it's very understandable that you'd want to limit the animals to two of those large ones, but because, as I showed in the report, based on weight, size, and waste production, the miniature horses very, very clearly fit closer to sheep and goats and llamas than they do full-size horses and cattle. So, that was the motivation in doing this, and plus, my wife absolutely loves the four miniature horses that we brought from Florida, and so we're trying to figure out a way that we can keep them on property.
Okay. Yeah, there's quite a bit of, of information here in the packet that we have.
Yeah, I was going to say, Mr. Chair, for probably, on behalf of the applicant and then the staff, this is great research. You guys have done a lot of good work here on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the common deficiencies in our code is that we don't have a good definition section. We're continuously working on that, but as Anna and I discussed this, and then our discussions with the applicant, as well as consulted some other land use professionals and our city attorney, we felt like if we had some pretty solid definitions, that would be helpful, so that we do have these kind of, these categories that are established, rather than just these, you know, troubling definitions that, you know, is, where does a mini cow fall, or where does a mini horse? There are differences, and I want to also appreciate, or express appreciation for the applicant for doing a great job with that research. With the information that was provided, we felt comfortable categorizing the horses in that medium-sized category. And, you know, there's all sorts of pygmy animals, mini, it's difficult to define where you draw that, draw that line, and one of the, one of the big challenges with land use is that we kind of have to be somewhat experts in pretty much any topic you could possibly think of, even landscape, to, you know, farm animals, bees, in addition to, you know, parking standards, all this. And so, really, the foundation of this, these definitions is we are trying to improve our code and, and have something else to refer to, because the only other clues that we had prior to, I mean, if this is approved, right, is, is just it said sheeps, goats, llamas, or similar animals. It didn't even say similar-sized animals, it, it just said or similar. And so, we're really trying to create, through this categorical definitions, that can be helpful, you know, other, other topics that come up, you know, pygmy goats, I mean, all of this. And so, I think this will help on our end, and I think, obviously, it'll be a lot more straightforward for the residents to understand. We shouldn't have to, you know, which it happens here and there, but we shouldn't have to, you know, have 18 hours of explanation to try and understand our code. We really need to work on making our code a lot easier, and that starts with good definitions.
Good, good. All right, are we ready to have the public, public hearing portion? We'll let you sit down. Just to give, for the, for an explanation with the public hearing, we allow the public to come up. You have three minutes to speak. In general, the commission does not engage in a conversation with you. Any questions that you have or that you pose, we will address afterwards, but we don't want to interrupt your time or, or take up the time having a conversation. So, after the public hearing portion, then we will have an opportunity to address any of the concerns that are brought up by the public, discuss it, go further with anything. So, yeah, we will now open up, then, the public hearing portion of the, this agenda item. If there's anyone here to speak on this item, please come forward. We'll ask you to state your name and give you your time.
My name is Garrett Carlson, and I live at 55 South, 500 East. I'm an adjacent property owner to the, to the horses there that, and I am uh the original complaint uh person that brought, brought this issue before us, because uh I thought that things were getting a little backwards, you know, where people bring in their horses, and then they come and ask for a, for the non-compliance, you know, certificates, so. After listening to what's going on there, uh, I have no problem with what he's proposing. You know, it seems reasonable. Uh, we've already addressed it, the item as far as the mitigation of the pharmaceutical and flies and so forth. Uh, and so, uh, I just, uh, I have no problem with it, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Brian. My name is Brian Bell. I live at 865 East, 400 North, Kansville, and-
Clarification, your last name again?
Bell, as in Church Bell.
Brian is Brian?
Brian, with a Y. Can you go to the table? The, the table here shows uh the number 5445. I find that odd, that it's so unique. I'm not sure why it just didn't go to 5,000 or 5, 500, but it appears that something's trying to be shoedorn in there. But um, I understood all of the conversation and fully support, I guess, what it has said. I did wanna address, I know that it's not a public meeting, I wish we'd have been given the non-public opportunity to discuss the 200 North issue. That road is really, really busy, it's single. I'm interested in the construction project that's coming. I didn't know if that's the Seward Walker one, or if you're actually widening 200 North, but that could certainly have some impact on the previous permit, but, um, and also, just lastly, on the, on the signage, I just would say, I saw the sign on the 6th of January, I asked for clarification of the city, I got a text from the number 497-7024, and said, hey, go here, here's the, the agenda, but there appeared to be no way following the link on the sign to actually leave comments that someone could listen to or understand. Not understanding the process, I thought I would be able to come and make comments in the meeting. It's clearly that it's an administrative function, but it would be uh nice if I had been given the opportunity to provide more comments. You addressed some of the issues that I had, a concern on that particular one, but I think there's way more that, and I'd really surprise that there's 25-foot frontage on what he plans to build versus where the city property ends, unless he's planning to buy the city property. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of thoughts for the council to consider. My name's Craig Christensen. I live at 362 North, 1,000 East, and uh looking, I guess, a question I have is, looking at the fowls, rabbits, or similar-sized animals, uh, how does that relate to dogs? Would that change any ordinance currently with dogs? And secondly, uh, the minimum lot size in square feet, seeing the property that was recently approved for uh, that takes up a great, a percentage of the property, it might be a better idea to consider the square feet available that is not constructed on for farm-use animals. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this issue? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this discussion.
Um, Mr. Chair, maybe just a couple of comments with regard to some of the comments we just got. The, I wondered too about the, the 5445, where that came from and so on, but as I looked at it, you go back down where it says the swine, the 43560, that's an acre. And then, the next one is a quarter of an acre, and then an eighth of an acre, so I think that's where those square footages are coming from. They're just taking, dividing the, the acre size equally. Um, with regard to the, the question about dogs, dogs are not farm animals, or they're not defined as farm animals, and these regulations are applying to farm animals. So that's, I think, the difference.
Right, and we, do we have, we have ordinances on pets that are different from farm animals?
Correct. They are regulated under, not under land use. Um, and we actually recently changed our code on that. Um, we contact with Davis County for any animal control services, and that's for domesticated animals, right? So, cats, dogs, your traditional animals that you think of, this is um then relevant to the farm animals as explained up here and doesn't apply to cats or dogs. We did, as we discussed all this, we did have, you know, some of this just doesn't make sense, like, i- i- you have a goat that is smaller than a, you know, Tibetan Mastiff, but we don't say, you know, you have to have a certain amount of space for a Tibetan Mastiff. Um, but the, yeah, to clarify for the public, that is regulated under a different chapter. You can have, um, is it three? You can legally have three dogs or cats.
Yes.
If you want more than that, you have to go through a process to apply with uh Davis County to receive that approval. So, that's separate from this, and thankfully, that is not something that we really have to do enforcement on, uh, it would be the farm animals.
How was for-
Mindy's time is up. And yes, Commissioner Summercorn, I believe you're correct about that. I'm not tied to a number of 5,444 fi- 444 feet. Um, I think it was just, yeah, it's, it's-
Split an acre.
Exactly. It's dividing that acre. Um, the, the changes that I believe happened with the code, and, and I think it was in the early 2000s, but um, they, the residential agricultural, the RA zone, is a true half-acre. It has to be 21,780. Um, when they added in, I think, the R120, so that kinda created, I guess, two separations. One, it's not an agricultural lot, and they, they reduced that square footage requirement, again, by that 1780. Um, why that was done, I don't, I couldn't speak to, but I think that is the reason why we had, if you were then in an agricultural zone, that 21,780 or above, um, you would be able to have additional animals, um, because that number, the lot area and square footage, was lower than the one in the R120. So, I think it's a very confusing, um, very confusing, and, and unless you knew the code intricately like staff does, it, this would absolutely not make any sense to anyone. Um, sometimes it doesn't make sense to us as well, but that's, again, like, what, why we're attempting to correct some of those um issues that exist with the code. Uh, and I, I'm kinda taking over Ms. McNamara's item, but one of the things with these yard and structure regulations, um, there was only three paragraphs. We felt like separating out paragraphs that were specific to each different kind of item would be helpful, um, so that we're referring to just one specific topic per paragraph, rather than trying to peel apart three different topics in a single paragraph. So, as presented here on the screen, the additional number two and three is just separating out that language from what was number one, just one paragraph. And if the commission wants to address the, the comment earlier from Commissioner Allred about trying to place, I guess, a little bit more clarity on the definition-
Well, you have a large factor. You have words you don't need. Just say dwelling. From dwellings on adjacent lot, lots.
Okay. Is that, is that something the commission's interested in trying to just change that So instead of saying from all buildings on adjacent lots, we just say from dwellings on-
Yeah. Just strike predominantly used or occupied by humans. That's, in my opinion, that's unnecessarily vague and lengthy, you don't need it. Just plain language is always better. Uh, I have a, I have a question. I have a couple of things I'd like to suggest. On item number four, you know, we don't address the bug issue, the flies and maggots and stuff like that, and I think that should be in there. You know, my own experience working for cities is that it's not dust, noise, and odor and drainage, you know, one of the biggest issues is flies and insects and stuff. If you allow manure and stuff to pile up, now, I know your small horses are not, you know, I, I can tell, you're gonna do a good job, right? That's why you're here. But, you know, you got a big pile back there, and then you get people who are having a barbecue, and let me tell you, I, I've had to personally handle this complaint when I was working. And it's a pain to go over there with the health department and go through a pile of manure and measure the amount of maggots and flies and stuff. It, so I think we should address that by saying, including that, because it doesn't say et cetera. It says, you, applicant's gotta show that odor, dust, noise, or drainage will be controlled. Well, I think it's pests. Insects or pests should be added, because that's a specific problem with animal uses. So that's one suggestion.
What would be the best term? Pests, perhaps?
Yeah. Yeah, pests, because pests is kind of a big, broad umbrella.
Yeah, I mean, that could include rats, too.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, exactly. Yes, that's a problem, too.
Is that something that's usually controlled, though, by the health department and not the city?
Well, the city says you can't have a nuisance, but the city has a hard time going out because they don't have specific ways to measure things. Like, an example of how the city doesn't have the ability to do things is, there's noise regulations in every city, but hardly any cities of a certain size have tools to go out and measure noise. Somebody's always having a party, a pool party, and they get a call late at night, you gotta get somebody, the health department out there, 'cause they can have specific tools to measure it. Well, these planning folks here, they don't have this tools or the ability to go out and measure, you know, the amount of stuff you've got in the manure. But if you have a real fly problem, let me tell you, you want that health department out there helping you determine as a city whether or not that's a nuisance. And what I don't know, staff, is whether or not you guys turn over your nuisance abatement to the health, I mean, do you contract all of your nuisance abatement out, or do you do it in-house? Who does code enforcement for the city? Do you do your own code enforcement, zoning enforcement?
Yes.
Okay.
Me and Ann and Mindy.
[laughing]
No, Mindy's not. Mindy forgets that I'm Mindy's boss.
[laughing]
Well, I started my career-
Yeah.
-doing what she's, she does. And let me tell you, it's a problem.
So, to answer that question, Commissioner, we, we do code enforcement. We, we don't handle noise complaints. Um, those usually are loud parties, and we refer those to the health department, or, excuse me, sorry, the police department. Our next item, actually, I can speak to our, our noise ordinance a little bit more, but our noise ordinance doesn't have any specific levels of decibels. Um, that's problematic anyway, because what bothers one human doesn't bother another. Um, so, we really don't have the tools or the ordinance in place to successfully address a lot of those issues. Um, we coordinate with other departments um for some of the code enforcement. If it is illicit discharge, we work with our stormwater staff, Logan. Um, if it is, I mean, we have, we had, was it two or three complaints last year with people um dropping raw sewage onto a ground from trailers? We coordinated with the health department on that, they really regulate those types of things, but um we also had to address the illegal use of the trailers on the property, and they came hand-in-hand. Um, we do our best, we handle all the weed complaints, um, which are the majority of our complaints. We really have not had, apart from roosters, we have not had a lot of complaints about farm animals, thankfully. Um, I, we, we will occasionally get a complaint about rooster, where those are only allowed in our agricultural zones.
Yeah.
Um, one of the things that Ann and I went back and forth on is, you know, as with a lot of our specific chapters, we could do a lot of work and improve this a great deal, however, this, we're kinda tagging on to a residence application, and so, to simplify that and to try and get their request processed in a timely manner, we chose to just kinda take some of those low-hanging fruit to just improve it enough, um, that it just would be easier for, I think, all parties involved with farm animals.
Yeah, I, I like this overall. I think a little clarification would help, so-
And we could add, so I did, um, we could add in, as you're suggesting, um, so this would be then number four, but we could add in pests, you know, I have in parentheses, flies, rodents, et cetera. Um, so we can certainly add, add that into the recommendation if that's the planning commission's prerogative.
Yeah, I like what you've got there. I think that's really good, the, the, the language you've put in, pests, flies, rodents, et cetera, because those are, those are clearly associated. Um, so thank you for that. And then, um, number four, I, there's a problem in my mind that maybe you guys can help me understand. It says, applicant shall, shall show. Show that there is what? Show that there's a plan? So, I guess what I'm suggesting is that it's, it's the timing of this. Applicant shall show that odor, dust, noise, drainage, pests included, um, will be controlled, will be so controlled. The question is when? Is this after their approval at planning commission? Is it in conjunction with? Is it a submission with their application? Because what I've written in the margin here is that, in this case, since we don't have a rule on it, I think we could have, well, this isn't actually specific to his property, this is a text amendment, so we would need to consider for anyone going forward how we would do this. So, I would recommend that, as part of the code, that this be specific, more specificity is necessary. Applicant shall submit as part of their application, a plan for blah, 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 blah.
A plan or a statement?
Yes. Yep. Plan or a statement on how they're going to control that. Because this just, it's, it's vague, it's like, shall show when? When do they show it? I think it should be part of, you know, conditional use application. You submit that, say, here's my plan specifically, staff review it, sign off on it. Or let, and let the planning commission look at it as part of their um application. And then, um, on five, um, I'm a little confused here. It says farm animals must be kept within a fence, and then it says corralled or other. Do we just mean corral? Just drop the ED?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? Okay. And then one other thing, um, it's a little fly in the ointment, not, pardon the pun. Um, it says a distance from dwellings, so we've changed that, we're gonna change that to dwellings, but here is something that's interesting. We do allow ADUs, correct?
Oh, yeah.
Not yet.
Not yet?
Not, not-
Do you mean detached ADUs?
Yes.
No, we do not.
Or is that, is that gonna, is that going to be coming up?
It may be coming by-
Ask the state legislature.
The reason I'm bringing that up is-
It will not come from our city council, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
They are not interested in allowing detached ADUs.
Right, I thought that's where they'd gone. But if this comes down, let's say we have-
As a-
Let's say we have to in the future, now we have a problem with distancing, right?
Could have.
It could be a real problem. If you have somebody who's gonna put an ADU in the backyard, now what? We might wanna think about that. Is that something we wanna address now, or go, well, we'll, we'll address that later? Because certainly, you're gonna have people who may be grandfathered in, he's going to be. Because certainly you're gonna have people who may be grandfathered in. He's going to be, right?
Well, I think it's already addressed in the language that would be here. So if somebody came in for a new conditional use permit for farm animals and a neighbor had an ADU and they couldn't keep a structure 50 feet away, then that's... And Ann and I also discussed, I mean, there's, again, a lot of changes that we could make to this code to improve it. But we also didn't want to make those changes and create entire community of non-conforming uses.
Yeah.
Right? Because any... If we mess with that matrix in that code any more than we did, which really was just taking out unnecessary information, we're creating a large amount of non-conforming uses with all the farm animals on all of our one lots that have them. And we were, you know, wanting to avoid that. As far as the detached ADU, you know, I think that
That's what I'm specifically referring to.
...will fix itself with, if the state legislature passes a law that says you have to allow them or the city council decides that's what they want to do, then those, I mean, just because, let's just talk, let's say Melinda builds one in her backyard, but my neighbor has horses, and now they're out of compliance, that doesn't mean that the neighbor has to get rid of the horses. That just means they're non-conform, they're legal non-conforming.
Okay.
But to no fault of the individual with the farm animals. So, you know, that's something that I think is likely to happen with the state legislature. You know, and then we just will have to deal with the translation here on the ground with the non-conforming.
You can see the potential conflict here. If the city has these detached ADUs, they're gonna be back closer to property lines, right? And so, I mean, they just will be. And so now you'll have somebody who isn't gonna lose their right because they were there first. But I think you'll see an uptick years down the road. We don't have a lot of ADUs, but if we do, ADUs really get traction, you're gonna see a lot of these battles where people say, hey, I can't handle the horses and stuff you have back here. And they're gonna say, we were here first. So, anyway, I I guess I'm sensitive to it because I've had to deal with several of these that were from hell, frankly. I wanted to just strangle a resident once who took up all of my time for months and months and months. And their neighbor was there first with their animal thing, but they kept using the nuisance language as a lever to try to get the city to get rid of something that was perfectly, they were there first. So I guess that's probably why I raised the issue. Thank you for hearing me out on that. That's all I've got. Those are the issues. I have nothing more.
Can I do one? To me, it makes more sense looking at number four there at the bottom. Or drainage. To me, it should say "will be controlled so as not to constitute a nuisance" instead of having the "so" in front. Is that? I mean, talk me down if I'm...
Oh, um, let me go back.
As long as we're...
Well, I... So let's have a little bit of a discussion here. I guess... So the question I would pose to, and we can work on that, will be "controlled." I don't think the word "so" is needed in there. But, you know, I, as long as these conditional uses come to the planning commission, well, I guess I'm just wondering if there is value in having an applicant submit all the materials that are gonna demonstrate they're gonna control these things rather than just codifying that they must. And then, you know, I mean, it simplifies the application process. But the outcome is the same because if there is an issue with odor, dust, noise, et cetera, then we start our code enforcement issue. And I'm perfectly hap, this is just a question for the council or the commission. I'm perfectly happy to have them submit it. But if we add this, you know, this language in here, I think we also need to have some type of a statement that says not only do you have to submit the application materials that demonstrate that, but they have to comply. Which isn't necessarily implied with how this is written.
Yeah, I think it would be more enforceable if we just said applicant must control all those things.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, if you don't have them submit something, then why do they need to come here? It should just be an over the council approval.
Because the city council wants the conditional use permits to be in front of the planning commission. They don't want them done administratively by staff. And again, I mean, that's...
I agree. I agree with you. If they're gonna come here, that there ought to be substance to the reason they're coming here.
Sure.
And so I think, I think we should have them show the neighbors and the public, hey, this is how I'm gonna handle this. So I'm really good with the way you've got this structured.
It was helpful to hear from the applicant here, you know, what he was planning on doing.
Yeah.
I mean, I can, I can...
I think as it's written, the only thing we can enforce is that they submit plans. We need a statement that says they also have to do it.
Yeah.
Right, like, it has to be submitted but also successfully implemented. Which then just, I mean, we could add another section that just says that they have to submit it with their application. But then, as I think the, you know, the language would be, you know, the applicant shall control odor, dust, noise, pests, et cetera, so as to not constitute a nuisance. So maybe we have...
You might want to change the word "constitute" and replace it with "result." So it won't result in a nuisance. Just a thought. Because that's what we're trying to avoid, is a nuisance situation. You've answered my question, so I'll yield.
I'm just trying to wordsmith this in my mind here, but applicant shall submit an application materials that demonstrate...
Yeah, you're the expert.
As another policy writing expert, please.
How about applicant shall control odor, dust, noise, et cetera, et cetera, and shall submit a plan for how this will be accomplished, something like that?
Yeah.
Great.
Sounds good.
Whatever works. I like it. I'll accept the amendment. Oh, we don't have a motion, do we?
I might need you to repeat that. Shall control...
Yeah, exactly. If we delete that. Applicant shall control odor, dust, noise, pests, flies, rodents, et cetera, or drainage so as to so as to not constitute a nuisance or hazard to adjoining property uses and shall submit a plan describing or shall submit a plan for shall submit a proposed plan for doing so or shall submit a plan for doing so with their CUP application.
Okay.
We can chat.
Yeah. Yeah, and I mean, I think if the planning commission is okay with that, I think, you know...
Get the concept.
Get, yes. We know that the concept, the intent, and we can wordsmith offline before, before we would take a final version of that to the council. But I think, yes, that accomplishes both purposes, making sure that we can regulate and do enforcement on those issues and also having a plan submitted with an application that the planning commission or the land use authority on this item could look at. And I do, I do like that as well just because it, I think having residents be a little bit more thoughtful about getting these conditional use permits for animals like this could go a long way to preventing problems that we may have without having that requirement. So then, if, and I'm seeing head nods, but, you know, when you're ready to make a motion, this would become number four, which is just essentially rewritten as here, and then five would be...
As written there.
But take out the corralled and leave it as corralled.
Corralled or other.
I like it. So, looking at it, you know, we kind of have the clarification on the different categories, the sizes. That's kind of the cleaning up part. The other kind of issue is that should we write in miniature horses into that medium-sized animal category? For me, looking at the information that we were provided, you know, one of my biggest questions kind of revolved around the amount of waste that they produce, if there's any difference in other nuisances, noise, smell, things like that. According to this information, you know, the waste is consistent with other animals that are in that medium animal category, the sheep, goats, and llamas. There's nothing about the animals that, you know, would make them different. And so from my point of view, I think it makes sense that they could fit in that category and I guess I don't have an issue right now with it.
Yeah, no, it's where they do the definitions. I mean, they do define and they give examples and their definition for medium farm animals does include the mini horses.
I have one other question. Pot-bellied pigs? We need a full acre to have a little pot-bellied pig? Aren't, but a lot of people have them as pets. They don't, so you're saying they, there are no little small pigs?
Those don't exist.
They all graduate to big?
Yes.
Is that right?
I didn't know that. I grew up in a farming area.
So...
Thank you for the clarification.
Heck of, I know, but the pot-bellied pigs is already codified that way.
Okay.
So if you, right on the screen, it shows, we are adding in hogs.
Yeah.
But it already, the pot-bellied
That's already in there.
Pigs is already codified at an acre.
Thank you. Learned something new.
We could leave that for another text amendment for some other ambitious resident.
Yes, yeah, I would imagine we will have, you know, I, and we did try, and again, like, some of this is really, you kind of just have to sit around and have some philosophical conversations almost, but, you know, do we say similar-sized animals? Well, that doesn't necessarily mean the same size has the same impact. And so with our definitions, we tried, we tried to kind of control the growth of those categories expanding out to other animals by saying they would have to have a similar size or impact. And then, you know, if there was a disagreement between an applicant or a resident, I would render my zoning determination, if they wanted to appeal it, they could and bring information. But this is, I think, almost about as good as we can get in some ways. And, you know, other, we look at a variety of other cities zoning codes and, you know, there's some cities that allow emus and ostriches. And is that a medium-sized animal, or is that a large animal? Right? This could get really convoluted. And also, is it a farm animal?
Exactly.
You know, we Googled, how much does a peacock weigh? Because you're, how tall is a peacock, right? Like, you can understand, right? Like, this is a limitless topic with limitless options. Other communities regulate things differently than we do. Some have, like West Bountiful has a point system. I believe it was West Bountiful. So they have categories of animals, and based on the size of lot, you can have four points. And if a cow is four points, that's all you get. But if you have, you know, your smaller llama, that's two points. And again, considering this is a text amendment coming from, you know, a resident, we just don't have the time to get into changing all of that. The muck, yes. Mindy's very, she's full of puns tonight. Mindy's the goat.
Hey, can I make a suggestion on that last one then, where it says pot-bellied pigs? Do you want to strike the word "or" and put "including"? I think that's the intent of what you're saying.
Sure.
Isn't that the point? I mean, pot-bellied pigs are hogs and swine. But aren't you trying to make...
Or just put "and" pot-bellied pigs.
Okay, and, yeah, and, uh huh.
All of the other definitions end in "or." I don't, I don't know if that matters, but...
Yeah, we could, we could change, yeah.
See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm. We could change all of those "or."
You're trying to make sure people know, that includes pot-bellied pigs, folks. And if you didn't know, pot-bellied pigs are hogs and swine. And the same, they are. So I would say "and," or "including." That's just me.
We can change those definitions to "and" because we do want to include them, and it's not mules. I mean, it's hogs and pot-bellied. Whether they're the same category or not, I don't know. But we do intend to include hogs and pot-bellied, not one or the other.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, we can...
That's why "or" doesn't work that well. It kind of puts it into a separate category, and you're actually trying to do the opposite. You're trying to include it.
Right. No, I think that's a great point, Commissioner. Thank you. And that demonstrates very well how one word can throw off an entire intent.
All right, so where are we at? Are we getting close to feeling one way or another on this?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Are you ready for a motion? I'll make a motion that we approve, that, excuse me, that we recommend approval to the city council, approval of the language regarding seventeen dash twenty-four dash two farm animals as drafted by staff and presented with the changes discussed. With all of these changes we've discussed. If you want, I can lay those out, but I think you've got them all. We just say "as we discussed."
They're all right here.
It's good enough? Okay. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
I think it's good improvement.
Yeah. I just wanted to commend the applicant for the research and the work. It was fun to read. It was kind of a fun thing to see a resident doing.
We need to do this to the rest of the zoning coach.
I know. Yeah. And kind of what I, I meant to send this screenshot of a Facebook post to the commission, but as I was looking on Facebook for some information, actually work-related for some other tasks that I have, I will send it out to the planning commission, but I found somebody posted a photo of Mr. Wilson's wife walking around town with one of their, with one of their minis. And, you know, the comments were basically like, man, we love K'sville. Only in K'sville could you see this. And so I...
But it was illegal.
Yes. In fact, actually, the requirement is that staff needs to come over and meet the minis in person. And any future minis, we can have a naming contest. But that was one of the comments that, yes, that the applicant stated that, you know, it's like... know, it's like, there's just going to be smiles and joy around town as you're walking around with these mini horses. So we will very much look forward to that.
I know that my family said, well, call us if those horses show up tonight.
That's right. We know where you live.
All right, we have a motion to vote on, we'll start with Commissioner Somety.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, that'll go on to city council sometime in the next month or so or
Yeah, we, I already let Mr. Wilson know, we will get this on the city council meeting for February 6th. And then we'll, we'll be in touch in between now and then, but yeah.
All right, very good. We will move on then to agenda item number seven, public hearing for Title Seventeen, Chapter Eighteen, car wash standards, some text amendments.
All right.
Take it away.
So this is in response to concerns that came about over this past year as two car washes were opened up in the community and both of them, although for different reasons, had a negative impact on the residents surrounding the car washes or anyway. So the, the council asked staff to address through an ordinance, some of the issues that we have experienced with car washes. So just, I'm going to go through kind of the methodology or my, how, how I approached this and want to thank Anne for a lot of her hard work and research on this, but, but we take a step back and, and looked at like, what were the problems that arose from these, from these uses? And it was noise and lighting were the primary issues with the Mr. Car Wash that came over here. That lot had some other specific items that contributed to some of the issues that were experienced. But this, this really is an attempt to try and protect our residents from uses that impact their, where they live, their residence. And so most cities would have a section on lighting standards, we don't. Going back to the comments about the noise, our noise ordinance, we looked at, could we possibly put some noise regulations in and enforce them through the noise ordinance? I don't think our noise ordinance is in, is written in a way that we could successfully do that. So looking at the two primary problems then, and then of course, that we don't have a code that addresses landscaping standards or again, lighting, we felt like the easiest way to approach is, I mean, we, you can regulate so much, those of us who, you know, I mean, right, some cities have books and books of codes. Our code tends to be a lot simpler. Some of the experience with the complaints from residents that we had here and then location that was constructed when I worked in Murray, we did some distance measuring of how far that impact reached from the noise and the lighting. And so apart from trying to write a code specific to car wash that would include landscaping and buffering and lighting standards, which we did look at, the conclusion was really that the easiest way to regulate car washes would just be to put forward a distance requirement between that residential use and this commercial use. So let me first just say that I had a numbered typo in the draft that was included in the packet. So the recommendation is that we would enact a new chapter of the zoning code, which would be car wash standards. And with some of the research that we did, there, you know, there's some cities that have multiple commercial zones, they have neighborhood commercial, they have, you know, a central commercial. Our code and our zoning regulations, again, are very simple. And so Ogden City, they regulate where car washes can go by saying, you can't be in like a neighborhood commercial zone. So then that would mean, right, you could go on Harrison Boulevard or Wall. But where our city is and how that works, we do have homes that are on our major arterials that could be impacted and we don't have a zone that's like, you know, yeah, in these big, big areas, like let's think of, you know, the Costco development in Bountiful. You can put a car wash down in the middle of that area and it's not going to impact the, because there's no residential zones. And so the, the fact that we don't have like neighborhood type of commercial zone like Ogden does, we don't have specific landscaping requirements that we could say, you can buffer. We just felt like putting a distance requirement in was the best approach. So we have some definitions that we would include eventually, and we did not get the public hearing notice for this to include our definition chapter. So that's something that Anne has been working on, going through all of our zoning code and noting areas where we don't have definitions. And so that's something I hope that we will be bringing forward to the planning commission and council at some point this year and, and we would move these definitions over into there, but we have two different types of car washes that we would classify. One would be the tunnel car wash, you know, they have the automated services and then the manual car wash is like what we have over here with the good spray, it's your wand, you're just, you're doing the work, there's no mechanism pulling your vehicle through. And then we have vacuum stations there. With the noise complaints that we had, there was noise based on the tunnel itself. I think a lot of the noise issues were created by the vacuums. Yes, yes, exactly. And there is a blower as you exit the tunnel that dries the vehicle off, right? So a lot of other standards are like, you have to orient away from residential or you have to orient towards the arterial street. Again, with how simple our code is and, you know, it just felt like the more we peeled away and how does this apply, that a more simple approach was, I think, the better way. So what we're proposing is no car washes east of I-15. We have, is it nine? I think we have nine car washes in total east of I-15. There are none west of I-15. But we feel like we have an oversaturation in the east side of the city. So we're proposing no car washes east of I-15. We did, the commission may recall that we did do an amendment to our, our commercial, our central commercial and general commercial zone last year to disallow vehicle centered services on all the frontage. So that even not having this car wash prohibitive east of I-15, we still do have some protections in place of not getting additional car washes in an area that is oversaturated. But this just is a blanket statement saying essentially, right, they're not allowed, we, we have enough over here. So the distance that we are recommending is 300 feet. And that goes back to the comments earlier where I measured how far away were the town homes that were actually in Mill Creek, not in Murray, but how far away were those town homes when they were impacted? And everything came to about 300 feet. It was like 260 feet over here with the distances that we measured in the homes that were impacted. Fort Worth, Texas, I believe it was, has a, a distance requirement of 500 feet. There are some that had some sample codes that had shorter distance requirements, but then had other regulations on top of that. So our recommendation is just to keep it as simple as possible and implement a 300 foot buffer between any car wash and residential use. I do want to point out specifically that we are excluding non-conforming uses. So if this, if there was a car wash that fit an area, but there was a non-conforming residential use, the way this is written, we would allow that to go next to a non-conforming residential use. And just as an example, there's a property on Crestwood, 23 East Crestwood that has been, I don't know how many dozens and dozens of calls we've taken over the last couple of years on that property, it's been for sale, it's been zoned general commercial for probably 20 years. The house is in very poor condition and a lot of people that come in and are looking that, they want to continue to use it as a non-conforming use or expand that use, which we wouldn't allow. And so in that instance, and discussing with staff and our city attorney, we felt like having the buffer apply to a non-conforming use really would, would not benefit the whole reason why we create those non-conforming uses or why those non-conforming uses are created. There's a, a shortlist of other standards that we're recommending that the automatic car washes would have staff on site during business hours, I think most of them do this anyway, but as a safety, you know, issue, if a vehicle gets trapped or, again, with noise of, you know, the vacuum system blew a hole and started creating all sorts of noise problems, we would want to have someone there. There's a, you know, requirement to have on and off switch for those vacuums and that those vacuum stations would need to, need to comply with the distance requirements as well. And then no outside loudspeakers or radios are permitted. And then we wanted to make sure that there was adequate room for vehicle stacking. That's something that has been a problem. Like I've seen it on 500 South in Bountiful, I don't remember the, which car wash is over there. But there's, you know, I mean, it's kind of like, hey, you have a big snowstorm, rainstorm, the next day it's all nice weather and everybody wants to go get their car washed and that, you know, traffic is stacking up onto your arterial roadways, which is dangerous. So we wanted to make sure that they can demonstrate that there's adequate vehicle stacking. So, you know, the, this very simple ordinance that we're proposing, you know, taking information from all of these other cities and what we could do and how we could regulate, this just seemed to be the best approach for K'sville and it's very simple and straightforward, but this is what we are recommending and I'll open for any questions, the commission, and, and yes, as a reminder, this is a, a public hearing item that we'll need to have as well.
So this would apply to all car washes? Regardless of location, right?
Yes, yeah. And regardless of whether it was a manual or an automatic car wash.
So this is for all future car washes?
Correct. And I, and I will say, I, that, looking at the zoning as it spans and the location of residences and those undeveloped commercial locations, this doesn't leave a lot of options. So the planning commission should be aware of that with, you know, the discussion and the recommendation. But also I think that's okay because the intent with this is to protect our existing residents. So if a car wash is built and somebody rezones something next door, it's mixed use, whatever, we could still approve that rezone in that project, but then at least this is people coming in after the existence of the car wash and not the opposite, which is what happened over here, that we had these, you know, these homes that have been in the community for decades, if not century, at least a century, and they were negatively impacted by this new use. So, so we really are trying to approach it from, you know, creating that protection for our residents versus trying to find a way to well, I guess the better way to say that is just that with the properties left in K'sville that could develop, I think the proximity of those residential uses would really preclude any more
Yeah.
car washes. There's probably some areas that you could make it work, but it would be difficult. And as staff, again, we're okay with that. The, you know, this is a needed service, we want to have it in our community, but there
And we've got plenty.
What was that?
We've got plenty.
We do, we do have them in our community. And so, you know, if, if people end up having to come from the west side of I-15 over to the east side, that's okay.
Okay.
Looks good to me.
Let's have our public portion of this discussion. So we'll open up the public hearing part of this. If there's anyone here who would like to come forward and speak on this issue, we invite you to do so at this time. Okay. We'll close the public hearing portion then and move to discussion by the commission.
I've got some suggestions. Under the top two definitions, automatic and manual, if you go to the last sentence on both, does it make sense to just strike the words or may not?
Okay, hold on, I need to get the right thing pulled up here. And I should, I should also add that after further discussions with the city attorney, he felt like removing the word passenger in front of automobiles was, and sorry, I totally spaced conveying that, but we would, we would recommend that we remove the word passenger from, in front of that, just reducing any potential argument like, well, it's a vehicle, but I don't carry passengers. So that said, Commissioner Alred, can you go over your question, your concern again? And I will pull, now that I have this pulled up, I can
I was also going to bring that up as an issue because you're not going to get commercial vehicles to go through those, right? So the thought occurred to me, you could just say, you know, no, for non-commercial automobiles. But I, I don't think I've ever seen a, a service truck with dual wheels or anything like that ever go through a car wash, but I guess it's possible. But anyway, does it even need to be addressed? It's just for washing automobiles, period.
And then do the same thing under the manual one, remove the word passenger one?
Like a FedEx trucker, you, you don't see those, they're too tall, they don't go through those, but
No, but there, there are, I mean, there are other, like, there's some of the, I don't know, like I'm thinking of the flower delivery vehicles, like we, we have a Sprinter van that would not fit through any of those tunnel car washes, we have to go to the, the wand washes.
Okay.
But some of those, like the Ram Promasters or the Ford Transit could still be a commercial vehicle and fit through those. So I, I, I wouldn't want to classify that between commercial and non-commercial vehicles.
So you think getting rid of the word passenger? Okay. And then I don't think you need to say may or may not include vacuum stations. If they can be allowed, just say may.
I said, just say may. May include.
Yeah. If they're not prohibited, then just say may include vacuum stations. Do that on both sections. And then down under seventeen thirty-eight dash three, under standards, you got a typo at the beginning of the second sentence. It says with distance requirements form, it should say from.
Where you
I'm assuming that's
Number three.
Three.
Right there.
Oh, right there. Oh, right there.
Yep. From residential. And then on the next one where it says no outside loudspeakers, radios permitted, radio station, blah, blah, blah. I think you could simplify that to simply say, no amplified audio systems or events shall be allowed. That covers, I think, everything you had in there. That would be menu boards. That would be any, you know, intercom system outside. You don't want like, you know, blah, 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 you know, people talking into a menu board like at a drive-through. So again, that language would be keep the first word no and then insert after no the words amplified audio systems or events shall be allowed or amplified events. If you want to be real specific. Does that cover everything? No amplified audio of any kind or amplified events. I think what you're saying, radio stations, like when a radio station comes and does a remote, right? They're promoting like a grand opener. We don't want to have them out there blaring music, correct? Is that what that's referring to?
I didn't have events in mind, but it
Well, what is a promotion? What's a radio station promotion? I'm assuming
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Could it possibly be like sometimes kiosks at these kind of things will have like ads playing and could be playing like a radio station ad on a kiosk or a menu board? Is that potentially?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, those aren't necessarily radio related, but they could be.
Well, an amplified audio system covers everything.
Yeah, pretty much does.
And then if you want to avoid an amplified event, like let's say there's a fundraiser and there's, somebody's got barbecue out there and they're playing a bunch of music. That would be an amplified event or a remote. Let's say the movie show wants to come out and say, hey, we're at the grand opening such, such day, you know?
Yeah, but that's going to be an amplified audio system that they're using, which we've already prohibited.
Right. So, does that work? Again, it simplifies
So to just say no amplified audio systems are permitted or did you want the events in there?
Well, you've referred to, the only reason I put that in there is because you referred to it by saying radio station promotions.
I'm just thinking for a grand opening, they could apply for a special event permit. And we would work through the city perhaps if they're promoting their car wash.
Okay.
You just leave it with no amplified audio system.
Yeah. And I think, I think Commissioner, the intent with this really was not the second part of that
Okay.
section, but just to say, you know what, we're not going to have you play music all day long.
Yeah.
While everyone's
Like at the vacuums, you know, you've got little speakers so your people are listening to music, you know, while they've got the vacuums going.
You know, we, like, we have over in Old Town, we have new homes that have been constructed in the last few years and an existing auto repair center that's been there for decades. And the residents complain about the music and the noise coming from the radio. So that really, and again, with that 300 feet, I don't know if this is really an issue, but I, you know, I, we didn't want to have the situation where they are playing loud music and
Yeah.
over speakers while people
Yeah, tire shops, repair shops, they all have loud music, you know, a lot of them have loud music going on out in the bays, you know? So are we saying, so does that cover it then by just saying no amplified audio systems allowed are permitted?
Period.
Okay, great.
Just like you've got it there.
And then under where it says vehicle stacking, I would just switch those words in the first sentence. Or at the beginning of the sentence where it says the site shall provide space sufficient, I would just reword that to say sufficient space. Makes it a little, run a little bit better. That's, I'm just, that's semantics, but I don't know why you would put space efficient.
Hey, when I run my stuff through Grammar Check AI, it said it was fine, but
Well, just a thought. Okay. And then I had some other concerns. I mean, am I, that's it for all the standards? There's no additional? Okay. So let me say, let me suggest something. Do we, do we want to address hours of operation? Is that addressed somewhere else in the code? Well, I think we definitely ought to have an hours of operation, a cutoff on light and sound. So any new car wash built anywhere should have a light system that is in the warm spectrum. Okay. We don't want, we don't want the gas station lights, that cold bright white light. If it's anywhere near residential neighborhood, you want the warm spectrum, which is in the 2,700 to the 5,000 on the spectrum, on the light spectrum. And then you want to limit your height of your poles to no more than about 20 feet. And then you want to have them with either cowlings to shield the light down. And you want to have those lights on an automatic system, photocell system. So they go, they go on at, you know, come on at night and shut off at midnight, you know?
So I think what you're really describing is that we need a lighting standard section.
Yeah.
And, and I agree with that. However, I didn't want to create one specifically just for car washes. Like we need to have that, that would be for all commercial development, not just car washes.
But in lieu of the fact that we don't have one, I think you should put something in here as a placeholder. Literally hours of operation. Are you, do we get, could somebody come in here and put a car wash open till 2:00 AM?
Again, with a 300-foot buffer, I don't know
We're basically done. I can't think of any spot.
If that's necessary. I mean, we can certainly add that in. I think most of them operate from dusk to dawn. But, but also these standards apply for both automatic and manual car washes. And so, you know, what if it's 2:00 AM and I'm on my way home from some random road trip and I need to get the Moab mud off my vehicle? I, that might be the best time of day for me to do it. If the planning commission wants to have standards for hours of operation, I think that is fine to add in. And I would probably just recommend dusk to dawn. But, but now we would probably, I mean, then do we want to apply that to manual and automatic car washes? And
I mean, believe me, there are people out there that are always trying to be cutting edge and they'll do, I'll do a 24-hour car wash. I'll do the same technology as everybody and I'll stay open later. I'm saying if you don't address it, you never know if you don't get back to it. I'm just saying, I think I'd put a placeholder in to just say, these car washes that make a lot of noise, they have to be 300 feet away. Well, I can hear motorcycles two miles away really loud in my house because the way my house is oriented to I-15. I mean, I can hear stuff that you wouldn't imagine you can hear pretty loud. And so if I'm 300 feet from one of those blower, automatic blowers, I want to make sure that goes off by 10 o'clock at night. You know, it's 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I'd stick something in there or see what, what's going on in town. But somebody's going to push the envelope. So that's my suggestion. Take it or leave it.
Well, I'm, I'm not being disagreeable, but just kind of pointing out, right? The, the opportunities for commercial development and new car washes with that 300-foot standard is going to be very difficult to allow, period. If you want to include some operation hours, I mean, obviously whatever, this is, this is your recommendation. So if you want to include that, that's fine.
Well, council's going to see it anyway, but I'm trying to address the fact that we are, we're talking about impacts, are we not? And if we are, we ought to have something along that line. I would. Now, you say there's hardly any other opportunities for car washes in the city? Like what about the, like on 200 North out at, at West Davis? That property couldn't have a car wash, correct?
I believe it would be
Because I specifically
I mean, I haven't measured, I did not measure that particular location, so I don't know. I mean, I can try and do that
That's the one that popped into my mind because I'm going, wow, that's got a school there. We've got neighbors right behind it to the north and they were very vocal about their concerns.
Oh, you mean
They could not, the Maverick.
Sorry, you, you mean, you don't mean 950 North, you mean 200 North.
200 North, out on the far end.
They, this, you would not, a car wash would not be permitted there.
Oh, okay.
And, and through that whole, I'm going to call it a mess. Through that whole mess, right? There were residents over there that said, we don't want a gas station. We'd rather have a car wash. And I was sitting here thinking, oh, no, you don't.
Yeah, exactly.
So, yes, a car wash would not be allowed to go at that particular location.
Okay. And is that because of the zone or it's
No, that would be because of the 300 feet setback required, or the 300
Property to property.
Yes.
So it's not the car wash, it's
It's not building to building and I would guess that there are zero places that you could have a 300-foot property to property.
Okay. Well, it's food for thought, but thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I, it, it might not be zero, but it's definitely very low.
Yeah.
And again, as staff and I think even as a, well, as a community, I think I'm okay with that. These car washes don't produce any type of sales tax revenues. We received $2,200 worth of property tax from Mr. Car Wash. There's really no benefit to our tax base or our sales tax revenues to have these types of businesses in our community. And I'm not saying they don't bring value because they do. And I'm not saying clean vehicles are a bad thing. Especially because I'm sitting right next to Mindy. Right? But, but I'm okay from a, from like an economic development standpoint. I think it's okay that if the end result of implementing this ordinance is that we don't get any more car washes in Kaysville, I think that's fine. And I'm sure the car wash industry is cursing me for saying that out loud. But the fact is that these really do not bring any type of revenue or helpful income to the city.
Totally agree. Could not agree more. I think they are somewhat of a bane to our existence because I, I look at them similar to storage units. Storage units have a massive footprint.
Now, 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 Commissioner Alred.
Oh, I've had to write ordinances against, to literally outlaw. Because it's hurtful to your tax base. They don't do much. And they're high crime.
Let me just see if the zoning map will
No, no, storage units.
Be very, very slow.
I mean
Super low, super low, low property, low sales tax, low property tax and high crime. It's the worst possible land use. Storage units. What's the sensitivity over here with, with this discussion?
Oh, I love car washes. I have a connoisseur and I love a clean car and I love a clean car connoisseur.
Oh, I use them, I use them too.
I did a deep, like I was very methodical in my membership to learn. And there's a lot of people that enjoy clean cars.
I, I use them, but there are so many of them, I have a real problem. So I love what the city's hearing here
You know, I used to think that Walgreens was taking over the world, but then I was like, no, it's actually Maverick. But now I believe that it is these tunnel car washes.
Yeah.
So when I was looking at this, and let me see if I can get, I don't know why this is taking so long to load. So there could be where's Angel Street?
It's right there at that corner.
Right here. So you know, this property right here might, maybe.
This is 200 North and this is Angel.
Oh.
So she's saying possibly on that corner.
Yeah.
But it just really, as our current zoning sits, right, like there's really not, I mean, we, we have had inquiries about a car wash at this location. And that really was, I think, one of the genesis for getting this car wash ordinance in place was, right, this, this would be an awful location for all of the residents that are around there. And then there, we, we had some calls about some other location, the Flint Street, or excuse me, Angel Street 200 North location. And, you know, again, we have all of these existing homes that are really close and, and the desire is to try and protect them with right, this distance setback, so, or the distance requirement. So I really, I don't myself see a lot of possibility for a car wash to come in. There was Commissioner Alred, I thought you were speaking to this, this property here.
By my house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think
That would definitely be heard.
I don't think that would work. I think it would be too close because we, because I did put in there to measure from property line to property line. So, you know, I, I don't believe that there would be a possibility here. And again, that's, like, that's something as staff, as your professional staff that look at this, that's okay. If, if we can get something that generates revenues and, and sales tax and doesn't have the impacts that these car washes have, then that would be our preferred use.
Well, I'm not hypocrite. I, I like them again, but I look at that location and I go, that's perfect for somebody. They're going to say, that's ideal for a car wash, right off the interstate, right off of West Davis, you know, and it's
Can you see the bus on West Davis?
The what? The, oh, yeah, yes. Well, I live, got to remember, I live on that screen you were showing. I live right there. So I'm hoping for something really good on that property.
Can I ask a, this is hypothetical. I have no idea if this even would apply or anything, but, so what about like a business? So they're just west of, of Main Street in North Kaysville. You've got Paul Davis, you've got Spears Plumbing. They have fleets of cars I see pulling out every day. Could they have like a wash bay? Is that covered in, you know, is this just commercial? I have no idea if that even should be something we bring up, like it just, it popped in my head.
No, I, I think that's a really good question. And in fact, as you say that, I, I I'm thinking of, let me, let me address that and then I'll, I'll go somewhere else next. But I, I think the way this is written, that it would, I mean, this isn't specific to a commercial car wash. It's just a car wash. It would probably be more likely to be a manual one, which I think those are a lot less offensive with noise.
Yeah.
But I think it would apply. And the other thought that I just had, let me go back to the map, is you know, we do at our, although it would be an existing one, but we do have at our Public Works Power and Parks and Recreation Operations Facility, we do have a, a car wash there. Okay, where am I?
Yeah, I think right there, the pink, right, the L one?
The L one?
Some of that's the nursery and then up a little bit, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, and I think actually I don't think I don't think by law we're required to have one, but I know if you do have one, that the state requires you to have the, you know, oil-water separator. And I know we do want to make some improvements to our operations center, but I think probably because we have that existing we may need to exempt the city. But there is one that's existing, so it'd be a, a non-conforming use. I, where is that on that site? Do you know?
It's on
On the west side? Oh, I have no idea. I've never been over there. But that's something
I think they just spray on the outside. On the inside?
East.
And they just spray it right there.
But it's maybe even just more of like a hose and not necessarily like a whole bay.
A wand.
Okay.
I wasn't impressed.
Didn't meet your standards?
She didn't, she didn't ask for a subscription to the city's. Um, yeah, but I, I think, Commissioner Packer, back to your question with our market, street borough area, that could be an area that might actually work. Until such a time our mixed-use project gets built and then, you know, but I, but that would be redevelopment. Uh, and I would think that, you know, they'd probably just go over to our friends over here and wash their van out.
Okay.
We're ready?
Let me just also throw this tidbit out, so, um, the, we are recommending approval and, or that you, staff is recommending that you send a recommendation of approval to the city council. Um, we did, on July, I believe it was July eighteenth, the city council implemented a temporary land use regulation on car washes. And, um, this is something that we are up against a deadline again.
Yes, we are.
And I really feel badly about that. Um, so, you know, at this point in time, I am hoping we can get a recommendation to take this forward to city council at the meeting next week so that we can implement this prior to that TLU are expiring.
Could you put up the documenting, any of the modifications that we made to it?
Yeah, let me go over those. So we took out the, well, I corrected the, took out the word passenger and the or may not for the vacuum stations. Um, we just simplified that fourth standard to be no amplified audio systems are permitted. And then sufficient space to maintain vehicle stacking.
Chair, you ready for a motion?
Yeah.
I would make a motion then that we recommend to the city council approval of the, um, ordinance title seventeen, chapter, new chapter thirty-eight, car wash standards, um, as presented by staff with the modifications as indicated, um, by staff here at the end of the discussion.
Second.
We have a second? Any discussion? All right. Commissioner Sumacorn, do you want to start the voting?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. As someone who only uses car washes for entertainment purposes. Oh, my daughter loves them. And I, I'm a little kid too. I get in and I'm like, oh, look at all the, you know. I would never just, I think this is a good move for Kaysville. All right.
There has been debate in my department about which car wash, where, where.
Oh, okay. We'll sign up for your.
And I'm, I'm that person that my car is, car gets washed when my husband's finally annoyed by it enough that he takes it himself.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's.
See the sensitivity?
Now I understand. So what is, what is the verdict? What, what, what's the best one?
I wouldn't say that on the public.
Go look at her Instagram. Go watch the Instagram and then like and subscribe.
I send so many customers there. I should have like a three member.
All right, we have approval of the minutes from November fourteenth. This goes back a meeting or two, but we didn't have a full quorum last time.
I don't have them to look at.
Uh, at least the people that were gonna vote on that, so.
I did notice an error in these minutes. Um, my votes weren't in any, recorded on any of them.
Are, are they in here? I, I didn't see them. There, are the minutes in here?
Well, so let me say, this slide should say November fourteenth, not December twelfth. We were not able to approve the minutes at the last planning commission meeting because there wasn't enough of a quorum that was present from that November meeting to approve them. So, but no, we don't have the December twelfth minutes in the packet, so. So this would be for the November fourteenth meeting and. I mean, it lists where I make motions and everything, but then it lists everyone's votes. I'm not on there. No. So I would move to approve those minutes subject to that change.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other matters?
Oh, okay, yeah. So we do have several items for the agenda for the twenty-third. No, no, that's not going. Um, we will have another text amendment from a resident regarding, um, provisions for seasonal farm stand. And we'll have a conditional use permit for a couple different businesses. Who submitted the first one?
Uh, it's the American Credit Union.
Oh, it's that one. Gotcha. Okay, yeah. So Amer- America First Credit Union over in the Smiths Marketplace parking lot, that's correct. They, they have submitted a whole sign package to the building department. Two of those would be EMC signs, one would be on Flint, the other would be on two hundred. So we'll be bringing that to the, the planning commission. Um, we have received another rezone application from, uh, Brian Carling, who just had the rezone application of R four denied over on his property over at five fifty west. Um, I, that will not be on the next planning commission meeting. Um, I, there, there's some work to be done, probably with the development agreement that would, needs to be done before we post a public hearing for that. So that'll come before the commission, um, in February, maybe, uh, if not February, probably March. Um, and that was, I think I said, the application was for R one six. Um, but there's several questions I have with the application. So we'll work with the applicant to get those questions addressed and then, um, move forward with getting a public hearing posted and getting that on an agenda. On January fourteenth, so next Tuesday, there will be an open house, I think at five o'clock for Ogden Clinic, or is that at five thirty? So if anyone's interested in that. Okay, yeah, um, so that, that would be over at the Ogden Clinic at, you said five thirty? Okay, I think that's what it was. And then I've, and I've met with Symphony Homes, you know, multiple times over the last few months as they are working on a development over in that Sunset Equestrian Estates. So they have decided to hold a, a neighborhood meeting and have put notices out to neighbors over there in that area. That will be on, again, next Tuesday, so the fourteenth, from five to seven. And it, one makes, make it very clear, this is not a city meeting. The city is not hosting, sponsoring. We will have some staff there just because I, I want to make sure that if there are questions that come up, that we have a presence to a- a- address. But this is something that Symphony is, um, conducting on their own to try and get feedback from residents over there of what they would like to see with the, there's about seventy acres over there that are yet to be developed. So that is going to be at Snow Horse Elementary, um, from five, five to seven. So if the, it, I mean, it's, I'm gonna say open to the public. Um, it's not a public meeting, we're not noticing for it, we don't have an agenda, it's Symphony's doing that. But if that's something that the planning commission would be interested in attending, I think you're more than welcome to do that. I know, like I said, I'll be there. Um, I think we'll have some council members that will attend as well. And, uh, really their just intent is to try and get an understanding from the community of what they would like to see over there. And I think that's really, um, it from at least that standpoint, um, we did have a public hearing at the city council meeting last week on the community reinvestment area. It was, I'll say, well-attended. The council decided to put off taking action until this next Thursday. So that's on the agenda again for, um, for them on Thursday. And I expect they will, uh, take some type of action at that meeting. Is there anything else that I can think of? Okay.
That's plenty. We don't need anymore.
My computer died.
Oh.
I have a question. That, that commercial area over there by West Davis, near my house, how many acres is, are in there?
It's about eight.
Okay, I was thinking six or seven. Okay.
Yeah, we do have a lot line adjustment application in on that property. Um, and the applicant, at some point when that lot line adjustment is completed, they'll bring in two different rezone applications. One for what would be the western part of that property to be general commercial. And then they would like to have the other portion rezoned as RM for some townhomes.
Yeah, just curious. I drive by it all the time, but nobody's asking me or anything, but my wife will say, don't you think this would be good there?
Yeah, and, and that's, I mean, I, I would expect that we'll see those applications here in the next two to three months. Um, they're just waiting on that lot line adjustment. And discussing with the property owner, which is, you know, it's Phil Holland, it's the Holland Development Group, um, you know, we discussed some type of a mixed-use project, but you have to really have a well-defined project to have that mixed-use zone implementation, implemented, the overlay zone. And they don't have users divine for the commercial space. Um, so the, it felt like the better direction was to just subdivide, or excuse me, do that lot line adjustment and then rezone the two separate halves as general commercial and RM, if that's what ends up getting approved.
You don't need much acreage to do really good mixed use. So it's par for the course, but gosh, it'd be fun to see nice little space in there, but I'll withhold comment.
Well, you can look up Mr. Holland's contact information and give him a call.
I mean, it's amazing what you can do on eight acres. It's, it's unbelievable with good planning. You can really create a place, you know, nice place making or just standard stuff, but anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, thanks to everyone for all the time. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.